Sir, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Appreciate the opportunity to talk to you all and staff about the wonderful public safety camera program that we've instituted. I'll start off by thanking the council for supporting those efforts. Y'all have accepted several grants that we've received as a police department that have helped to fund just about everything that we've done so far. Staff has been supportive as well. And I want to also thank the members of our team at the police department that have been instrumental in writing for grants and taking care of the reporting and things because there's a heavy lift there. So Isabel Sprague, Kim Martin, Nancy Roberts, Mike Corcoran have been instrumental in a lot of this. Thanks to them. I like to start the presentations off with why, but before I get to that, I just want to kind of talk about the history of policing when it comes to things like be on the lookout alerts and attempt to locate. So going back, before license plate readers were a thing, we get calls from the community about people driving in a reckless manner quite frequently. Two, three, four a day, I would say. And we get calls from the community about other things. Well, lo and behold, how do people that drive recklessly, you know, get along? They're in a car. How do criminals get from a crime scene to their home or to the crime scene in a car? So some of those be on the lookouts or bolos were also information that we would have as a police department saying this vehicle is likely involved in burglaries because this subject whom we are investigating looks to be committing burglaries. So pre-LPRs, officers would sit on the side of the road and watch for the vehicle to drive by. So let's just say, for example, we've got an attempt to locate on Highway 69 for a reckless driver. And we have maybe just five officers on duty at that time. Four of them are tied up on a call. Now there's one officer that's racing up to Highway 69 to hopefully either intercept the vehicle or get ahead of it to make a traffic stop. It wasn't very effective, frankly. Took a little while to get from point A to point B. So the other big, and I'll use the term force multiplier that this system provides, is when now we have the vehicle that we are looking for, that we think is involved in committing crimes like burglaries, as the example. The officer would have to sit and hope that that individual was going to leave their home and maybe drive to the store to make a stop on them, try to find evidence to further the case. So again, a lot of time used, but very little effectiveness. It was not often super effective to do things that way. So now, fast forward to license plate readers. Now we have a system, currently, I think we have 26 active cameras in town, that as soon as a car drives by the license plate reader camera, it takes a photo of the rear of the vehicle and then immediately runs that through the computer. And there's almost instantaneous notification to our staff on patrol and traffic. I get notifications on my phone. Dispatch gets the same notifications that, hey, a vehicle just passed this license plate reader and the system says that it is wanted for, A, maybe it's one of our frequent drivers that drives aggressively. We do monitor those. And if there's somebody who's routinely reported as an aggressive driver, we will use the system to keep an eye. Primarily what we're looking at as well are investigative hits, like I talked about the burglary. Now if we have a detective and the detective has identified an individual who's likely committing burglaries, he can put the license plate in the system and then the same thing will happen. If it drives past a camera, we'll get a notification. So now a detective can have a record of where this vehicle has been in town and then potentially relate that vehicle to the scene of a burglary, thus enhancing the investigation versus in the past, we were relying on a set of eyes in a police department to do that. So it greatly enhances the safety of our community through being able to detect and then at times immediately apprehend these individuals who are committing things like road rage, aggressive driving, and also serious crimes. So public safety. I think the examples that I just described are a pretty good way to explain how public safety is affected. Traffic right now is very deep into using the system because they hunt down people that drive aggressively on our roadways. Our public is great about calling us when we have aggressive drivers on the roadway. Frequently, these individuals are called in multiple times before we're finally able to identify them and apprehend them. But the traffic team is now able, through the pictures that this license plate reader camera is taking of vehicles as they pass, they're able to do a search. So let's say there's somebody who's been reported three or four times driving recklessly on 89A in a blue pickup. They can go in the system and they can enter "blue pickup" and a timeframe, and it'll show them every photo of a blue pickup that drove past that camera, that timeframe. So now they can identify these aggressive drivers and be proactive about enforcing against them. And even some prevention work can be done to where we just, you know, go to a house and knock on the door and say, listen, your vehicle has been reported as aggressively driving routinely at this time of the day. We would appreciate it if that's you, if you would cut it out. And then on the other hand, at times, we know now when they're driving exactly and where they're driving, and then we can wait for them in a more targeted fashion. The public safety, again, going back to the burglar example, now we can apprehend the burglar potentially when the suspect is on their way to a crime scene or from. So if that alert is set up and the officers on the street know that the detective wants that vehicle stopped, it'll be right in the alert, stop this vehicle because it's likely that this vehicle is going to or leaving a crime scene. They'll stop the vehicle, find a reason, and then potentially find the subject. In this case, a burglar might be possession of stolen property or tools to commit burglaries. So public safety, officer safety. So, you know, in the past, when we made traffic stops, and still today many times, the first thing that we knew, the first time that we knew about what the license plate related to in the form of potential crime involvement was after we'd already stopped them. So now, because these license plate readers are reading these plates as they drive past, a lot of our officers are aware before they're stopping these vehicles if they are connected to crime or other criminal activity. We just talked about criminal investigations. So crash investigations can be aided when crashes happen to occur at locations where these cameras are located because they can be used to track the movements of the vehicles before the collision, if that makes sense. So I'll give a few examples. This is just a quick list of the type of incidents that we have intervened in using the Flock system. I think I've got a little description of each one of them here. So in one case, we had two vehicles that were reportedly involved in a shooting. So one of the vehicles was occupied and shot at somebody in the other vehicle. So between Flock cameras that captured a vehicle at about that time that matched the description, the next day, we were able to identify that suspect and take action. So the next example, this was actually in the first week that we had the system, I heard this one come out. Dispatch got the alert from Flock that a vehicle that had been flagged by the Pinal County Sheriff's Office because the driver was wanted for homicide, I think it was manslaughter, because she had killed an individual in a crash in their jurisdiction but had fled since she had been sentenced. So she had a warrant for her arrest for homicide, essentially. So we stopped her and found in the backseat of her car, her 12-year-old daughter, and the driver was impaired. So we stopped her, we put her in jail on DUI multiple felony charges, including child endangerment, as well as the warrant that she had. And in my opinion, potentially prevented another crash in that case because she was pretty impaired. We had a case down on 69 near 169. It was a domestic-type case. Couple of victims were shoved out of a moving vehicle, and we were able to identify the vehicle again through the use of Flock's photos that had taken of the vehicle as it passed the cameras. This one was in the paper. If you all remember the French Bulldog story, we had a gentleman who had a bulldog jump out of his car at Roberts Market. And through the use, again, of a combination of a surveillance camera and a license plate reader, we were able to identify the individual who in the end actually was trying to do the right thing, it seemed at first, and the dog was wandering around the parking lot, so he grabbed the dog and drove away. So we were able to identify the car, go to the house, and get the dog back for the home. So this one was a couple, three months ago now. We had a stolen vehicle report from an employee at a fitness center. And using Flock, immediately, we were able to locate the vehicle. And I want to say it was the sheriff's office and DPS that made the traffic stop and arrested the suspect. So within moments of this victim's vehicle being stolen, we entered the vehicle into the system, we found it, and the sheriff's office and DPS were able to stop it. So let me just, this is a really good one. So in this case, I can say pretty certainly that we prevented potentially a homicide all the way up to a mass shooting. So there's an individual in our jurisdiction who's reported as having made threats towards a doctor and making threats to go to the office and kill the doctor. Our officers use Flock, make a stop on the vehicle. He's got a firearm, it's loaded. So he was definitely intent, it seemed, upon doing that, and Flock allowed us to apprehend him before he got to the scene. Without Flock, we would have had to go to the doctor's office, get the doctor out, create a security plan at the doctor's office to stop the guy there if he got there. So just the prevention of violence, but also much less use of resources at times. This is a good one. So we had a gentleman with dementia who went missing. We entered his vehicle into the Flock system, and he's located the next day, given medical attention and taken to a hospital. So lots of usefulness with this system in helping to find people who wander, you know, or are lost or in need of medical treatment. So there's another burglary example there. So lots of success stories, and that's just a few. So I mentioned it before, we've got 26 license plate readers currently installed. We have six live view cameras at Mountain Valley Park. So the combination of the license plate reader and the live view camera greatly enhances the system in that the license plate reader just detects the license plate and takes a photo of the back of the park. The live view camera now keeps 30 days worth of footage of that area that's being viewed. So at Mountain Valley Park, we have several parking lots now that are going to be very well-covered by public safety cameras so that if the vehicle enters the park that is a crime vehicle or some other vehicle that we're looking for, we're going to know right away and we're going to get to the park. And then in addition to that, we're going to have cameras that we can use for current live view. If we know that something's going on at the park, our officers can be in their car. They choose to do this based upon what else they have to do at that moment. And they can pull up these cameras and see what's going on within the camera view. Now, two additional cameras are going to go at the park soon, and these are pan-tilt zoom cameras. So the zoom capability, I want to say, on these is 30 times. And you can read a license plate at 1,500 feet. You can make out a tattoo on a person at 1,500 feet. They're incredible. And so what these two pan-tilt zoom cameras are going to do is in combination with the whole system at the park, they're going to, through artificial intelligence and other things that I can't really speak to, they're going to work together. So as an example, we could set up an alert within the system to where the pan-tilt zoom camera between the hours of, I don't know, Parks and Rec would probably want 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m., that's when the parks are closed. If somebody's wandering through the park, it will detect them, zoom in on them, and then throw an alert. Obviously, these are ongoing discussions about how many of these alerts we're going to set, because there's a lot of capabilities. You can set it to alert you when there's crowds of people and tell, hey, if you see in this particular area a crowd of five or more people, please send us an alert. That would be very useful for the skate park, for example. So there's a lot of artificial intelligence alerting capabilities that these cameras are going to provide to us. And again, back to the recording, they maintain that footage for investigation purposes for 30 days. Another pretty phenomenal feature on these pan-tilt zoom cameras in particular is, let's say, a car drives into the park that's got an alert on it because we're looking for that individual for, I don't know, being active. And it will get the alert, and the camera will turn and look at the car and follow it all the way through the parking lot to where it goes, through the parking lot, as far as it can see. And so you can imagine the investigative potentials there. Lots of good, lots of good things here for front. The real-time operations platform, that's something that we haven't onboarded yet. We do have funding for it. What the real-time operations platform will do is take all of these cameras that we have, license plate readers, some cameras that we've already ingested from our Verkata system so that they can feed into this system. And in one place, for example, let's say, an officer working light duty or whatever we can do to staff this capability until we can stand up the full capability of a real-time operations center, can hit a button on the map, and it will immediately show the officer every camera within a quarter mile of the location that he's touched. So let's say there's a problem here out in the grass at Town Hall. Every Verkata camera that the town has has now been ingested to the system. So with one touch of a button, the officer can see the view of any cameras that are nearby. So there's a lot more capabilities that that operations platform are going to provide to us in the future. We'll be talking about drones as first responders and some pretty amazing things that that platform's going to enable. Community partnerships. So we've been very vocal with this program. We've had at least one meeting in this room where we invited businesses. Our community services team has done outreach to our business community so that they're aware that, you know, we have these things, this is why we have them, this is what we're doing with them, but also so that businesses in the community, if they choose to do so, can plug a server of some kind into their private security. The server is walled off from their stuff, so there's no exchange of information there. And we can actually ingest cameras from businesses if they choose to do that. So a good example is Scottsdale has a very robust program, and I want to say their mall is providing them with every camera they have. You know, they had a pretty significant incident during COVID at the mall down there. So that's a big deal for them. So eventually, I think we'll get to the point where trusted business partners are going to start sharing with us. If we had a camera at Circle K, that would be wonderful, of course, in the unfortunate event that they were burglarized, robbed, or some other crimes. We've sat down with our HOA community. HomeCo is basically, my understanding, the parent of every HOA in Prescott Valley except for Granville. So we talked to all of them at once, and they can themselves go in and purchase license plate readers and live view cameras to complement our system. And depending upon how they want to work it, they can just buy it and pay for it every year, and then we utilize it for crime fighting and traffic safety. So pretty cool program there. I hope that picks up soon. I talked about a couple of these already. Staff engagement. So, you know, anytime you onboard new technology, and I'm the same way, really, I have to learn another, I gotta have another password, another sign-on. How many different screens do I have to have? Will it work on my phone? Does it work on an iPhone? All the stuff that you go through, right? You know, and we expect that because we're human beings and we all do that. But right now, the staff engagements that we have with the system is just phenomenal. I'm super proud of our professional and sworn staff and the way that they're using it. Our investigators, our drug detectives, everybody is really 100% engaged with this software to make our community safer. So they are doing great. Regionalization. So we are already in conversation and have been for quite a while with the city of Prescott, the sheriff's office, about standing up some regional capabilities where there's some shared responsibility. You know, criminals don't mind boundaries of cities. That's well-known. And so if we can share all of this infrastructure to work together, and we're already doing that. For example, we share all of our cameras with the city of Prescott, and they share theirs with us. So our officers can, without having to ask for permission, can look at cameras outside of our jurisdiction because many times the car will disappear from Prescott Valley on 69, but then there's a camera that the city of Prescott has on 69, and we can pick them up again in there. So lots of regionalized cooperation around this. Lots of good examples of that around the state. Scottsdale's got a strong program, and they're one of the leaders in the valley in the real-time operations center arena. They do a quarterly call. We're on that with them, the city of Prescott is. So we're really looking forward to being forward-leaning in this area and continuing to look at what technology we can continue to bring onboard to make our officers and our community safer. Through the system, we share our data with 267 other Flock agencies throughout the country. And, you know, at first, we asked some questions. Do we want to share with everyone? Well, yeah, because if we share with them, they share with us. And now if I've got a license plate that was here doing something, and we had them in the system entered because we were looking at them for, I don't know, aggravated assault, and they tripped to somewhere in Rhode Island where we're sharing information, we'll know that. And then we can ask the Rhode Island authorities to help us out with the case, but also help make their community safer because now Rhode Island is going to know they've got this person in their town that's probably a criminal. So we've shared with the law, and we'll continue to do so. The precautions and safeguards that we've enacted to, you know, protect this system to ensure that it's not misused, and if it is misused, there are serious consequences are quite a few. So data retention and protection. Right now, everything that we get is encrypted, goes up to the Amazon cloud, and anytime it's pulled back down, it gets encrypted in the process as it comes back down to us so that we can use it. So good data protection there. Retention for everything is 30 days. After 30 days, it just falls out of the system. That's at times a challenge when it comes to certain investigations. Mayor, you know, sometimes you don't know about things until 30 days later, but we don't want to have so much data that we start to have other concerns on the other end about over-surveillance and over-retention of that kind of data. We have a strong policy that we worked with our legal advisors, our legal department, thank you Ivan, as well as Lexapro, thank you, to institute, talks about training, talks about the things that we have to do, again, to keep that system safe. And then good training. We have Casey Graber, who has been phenomenal in being an admin with the system. She's provided training to our people, the Flock Safety Organization that is our vendor, has been phenomenal at coming to our location to provide training, not just once, but several times, because as you can imagine, technology evolves pretty quickly, so we need to keep our officers trained. Funding. Right now, we have about $152,000 a year responsibility for this program overall. We haven't paid all of those bills yet, and we will pay some of them. Flock might not like me very much for that, but we're really holding our feet to the fire when it comes to paying when the system is working properly. So it's working fine, it's just taken a little longer to install some of it than we would have liked. But my point is, is that out of that $152,000, so far only 15 has been TownFlock. The rest of it has been obtained from things like the DPS Border Grant and other grants that we have been awarded. There are future grant opportunities. It's unfortunate, though, that most grants aren't structured to maintain old systems that are already in place. They're structured to provide new systems. So we can continue to get money to add cameras, to add capabilities from grants, but we cannot fund the ongoing annual cost of the system with grants. It's not a possibility. Legislative funding, however, is a possibility, so we'll keep working on that end. And then obviously, the reality is that some or all of the program at some point may need to be covered by the general public. So does it work? And this is not scientific, you know, I didn't get this peer-reviewed or anything like that, but in the six months before we had the system, we had 715 arrests, pardon me. And then in the six months after, we had 833, which is a 17% increase. That's significant. That's a big increase in six months. And I can't tell you, standing in front of you here today, that that has anything or everything to do with our license plate system or public safety cameras, but I wholeheartedly believe it does. And I think there's a lot of evidence, especially in those examples that I gave of cases where we probably wouldn't have made arrests, that we are now capable of making those arrests. A little quote from Chief Ticer, "By integrating this technology into our policing model, our officers have seen significant successes in capturing dangerous suspects quickly, which in turn keeps our community safer." I don't think I have anything else. We do have, speaking of transparency, we do have a link on our website that the public can go to that very clearly says what do we have? What do we have this many license plates? We have this many live view cameras. So we're being open about that information. We're not trying to hide it. We're out here talking to y'all about that, and as a result, the public knows what we're doing. Sorry.
Counselman?
And I do have, if I may real quick, I do have a representative from Flock here as well, in case you have questions that I can't answer.
Yeah, I have two short questions. One is, with the live feed cameras, it would seem that the next step would be facial recognition software. And is there any move afoot to implement that?
So I can answer that question by saying, there is talk of it. It's not a capability of the system yet. The, so I don't want to get into the specifics of what they are talking about doing because that may not become a reality, but it is a conversation. We do have a facial recognition policy that we're working with. Legal's seen it. We've bounced it off of a few other people. And what I can say, Councilman, is that if we do allow that capability within the system, it'll be very well-guided by policy and training.
And then the other one is, as far as the 17% change in the statistics there on the arrests, would be, is there any way that you could start separating it out to show, since you already have a lot of statistics, maybe have a box to check or something where if Flock was involved, that you'd give credit to that? If it wasn't, it wouldn't? So you could split, you could figure out more closely what the statistics were, the actual statistics were on the effectiveness?
Yes, I'll look into how we can figure the statistical piece out, Councilman. And we do have a box already, so our officers check the box. What they're doing right now, they check it whenever they use it, because right now we want to know when we're using it. So I'll consider what you've asked. Maybe there's a way to tweak what we're doing to accomplish that. Thank you.
Assistant Chief Edelstein, that was a great presentation as well. Thank you. On the 30-day retention, we can still save the, let's say you do need that information, you can still save it at that time, though, right? It doesn't just, like Mission Impossible, disintegrate in 30 days, correct?
Yes, is the short answer. So what generally happens, let's say in the example of we have a detective working a burglary case, and there's a vehicle that that detective's working, that information will immediately move from the Flock system into our evidence.com system, where it would be retained based upon the retention for the case.
Thank you. Okay, great. And then what are the size of the cameras about?
I want to say the, so they're solar, the panel, I think, is about this big. Yeah, and the camera, I think, is only about like that tall.
Okay. And then on the live cameras, are they motion activated too so that it automatically follows the movement? Can a person actually come back and like turn it to where they may want it? Happen to be monitoring the system?
So, yes, Councilmember, so the, I think the question you asked was, is it, first of all, is it motion activated? Yes. And that, those are settings that we can create. We could say, no, we don't want motion activation, we only want people activation if it's either a person. So we can kind of tell the camera how we want it to behave. And then as far as, yes, you can manually, from, you know, a computer or your phone, move the camera yourself if you want to look at something in particular.
And is there a big cost difference between the live cameras versus the fixed ones? Would it be more beneficial to our community to have more of the live cameras than fixed cameras, like for in the future, if we're going to add to the system? And then the second part of that question is, do we have enough? Because I know we have a huge area that you're trying to follow on everything.
No, we want more.
I know you want more. We're trying to figure that out.
Yeah, we, so using a lot of different information, including traffic flow from Simple, and then Crime Data and Traffic Crash Data, we put that all into artificial intelligence and used some other tools to designate. What would like a full-blown system look like?
Unity to have more of the live cameras than fixed cameras, like for in the future, if we're going to add to the system? And then the second part of that question is, do we have enough? Because I know we have a huge area that you're trying to follow on everything.
No, we want more.
I know you want more. We're trying to figure that out.
Yeah, we, so using a lot of different information, including traffic flow from Simple, and then Crime Data and Traffic Crash Data, we put that all into artificial intelligence and used some other tools to designate. What would like a full-blown system look like? So we do have a plan. I think you've seen it. Yeah. It's about maybe $250,000 a year is what we need just for cameras. And that includes fixed live view cameras, as well as the pan-tilt zoom cameras and some more license plate readers. We think that's about fully built out as far as that capacity is concerned.
All right, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Chief, who decides which vehicles or which license plates get entered into the system?
Thank you. Great question. So it's an individual officer's decision. You know, we train them- You know, we train them on the parameters. Some of our professional staff does have the ability to do so as well. And they make the decision to put it in the system. When they do that, though, there's there's a box they have to fill in. And usually, they're putting a report number in there. You know, because almost everything has a report number. Sometimes, maybe if it's a preliminary investigation, they'll use a case number or a cat into the number, something like that. But there's that check and balance.
Because you can see someone could say they went by a bar, entered every license plate, parked at a bar, and wanting to know if that those vehicles leave and hit the street and kind of see the possibility of.
Possibility of misuse is there, sir. And you reminded me as well, Mayor, thank you, for for saying vehicle. I don't know why I didn't think of this before. We we have two, and these are kind of a test phase thing, we have two license plate reader-capable dash cameras in traffic. And they love them. Not just because they're reading plates as they're driving around, which is a little bit different than our fixed license plate readers, but also because the cameras are capturing the behavior of the driver before the traffic stop, which, as you know, Mayor, is very important for court. You have two of those.
You mentioned earlier, in reference, like an aggressive driver that's been repeatedly reported. Does that aggressive driver know that they're in the system? Will they be told that, hey, your license plate is getting entered, and every time you're driving around, you're going to be tracked?
Yeah, sure.
On how that would work, right?
It's a good question.
Where do you draw the line on that?
Yeah, good question. I'll follow up on that and get back to you.
That's all. Just, and then how that happens, like, does my neighbor report me as an aggressive driver, and the officer just goes off of the neighbor's report, puts me in the system, and now I'm being tracked around Prescott Valley and Prescott?
Generally speaking, and and I'll verify all these things and get back to you through the town manager's office. The the traffic team doesn't use it for those reasons until there's multiple complaints and they can't catch them themselves, if you know, you know what I mean?
Yeah, absolutely.
And then when they're elusive, or many times, these aggressive drivers are are just, they're running from our traffic team. They're running from our patrol officers, especially motorcycles. And so we're not pursuing because we don't run after those people, right? It's not safe. So that's a lot of the times when the system's used for this purpose, but I'll get you more detail.
Perfect. And my final question is for the gentleman representing Flock. I figured you already came out here. You might as well at least go to the podium for a minute, right? So I'm sure you hear this a lot, or you've had this question, and I've seen it before, too. Like, this is a great tool for our law enforcement officers, but it's that fine line, right? Where you have those people that argue, big brother is watching. What do you say? Or what does your company say to those folks?
Yeah, no, look, I appreciate that question, Mayor, and Council, thank you for having me here as well. But the system, we try to draw as much parameter that we possibly can to make sure that there is an auto-trail and make sure that there's not a misuse in the system. So for example, if we get a report for an erratic driver or like somebody that might be a drunk driver, right? And then we're entering into the system, all right, looking for a white Honda. And, you know, it's got maybe some other key identifiers, like a windshield sticker. Then now we're going to put that in the system, but it's not going to return any results unless you tie it to a case number or some sort of search reason. So without a search reason into the system, you're not going to be able to return any results. And then furthermore, all I can, what Chief Edelstein said as well, is that we have a thirty-day retention policy on this so that we're not just holding on to data and, you know, going to the point where we're over policing.
Great. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
That's all I have.
I have one thing I just remembered. We are not, and these are not even capable of measuring the speed of vehicles, so they're not being used for photo enforcement. That was, I think there was some social media comments out there, but at some point with the concerns, I just wanted to address that.
Excellent. Thank you, sir.